Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. Councilor Heisler is in Oregon on a fire and we hope that he stays safe. I would ask that you make sure your cellphones are silenced and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Mayor?
Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity we have to meet here this evening in this council meeting. We're so grateful for the beautiful land that we live in here and are grateful for the moisture which Thou sent to our lands to refresh our forests. We pray that Thou would continue to provide moisture here. We're grateful for this country that we live in. We're grateful for those who serve in the armed forces and protect the freedoms that we enjoy here. We're thankful for our police and fire here and all of our town employees who are dedicated in what they do. We pray that Thou would bless them, bless their families. Now this evening as we consider important matters before the town, we pray that we might have a spirit of cooperation, a spirit of understanding and discernment as we look at the issues that we face here. These blessings we ask for now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item C is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the Town Council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard in Call to the Public and individuals are limited to three minutes. I have no requests for anybody to speak tonight. Okay, we'll move on then to Item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion unless a member of Town Council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. We've got two items on our consent agenda tonight. Are there any questions from the council? Motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. For the questions, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D on our agenda tonight is Business Before the Council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members however may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation of Child Support Awareness Month. Counselor Phillips.
Officer Mayor, Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, proclamation, Child Support Awareness Month. Whereas the Town of Pine Top Lakeside joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Arizona's families by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children. And whereas the state of Arizona will always be committed advocates for our children, whose safety and security remains top of mind, and whereas a child who receives emotional and financial support is more likely to feel safe and secure and are better equipped with the courage to be their very best in life. And whereas the Department of Economic Security, Division of Child Support Services, DCSS, is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first and to humbly serving Arizonans with excellence, respect, integrity, and kindness, as well as being an overall champion for economic growth and opportunity. And whereas DCSS strongly advocates for parenting responsibilities because parents and children benefit when both parents are engaged with their child at every stage regardless of marital status. And whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on fiscal responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunities for families to be able to enhance their children's future. And whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes diligent parents who spend time with their child and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now therefore Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done on this first day of August 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. I appreciate that. Item D2 on our agenda is a presentation of accomplishments and introduction of new friends of the library board members. I'd ask Betsy Peck to come up and introduce all of them. Welcome.
Good evening, council and mayor and staff and visitors. So, the library just finished a amazing summer program and the Friends of the Library are an integral part of everything that we do at the library, all of our programming and fundraising and just being wonderful individuals who voluntarily give their time and efforts for so many things at the library. So, I wanted to introduce you to our current board that they just elected in last month. So, I'm going to turn it over to our President, Karen Dennison.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, Mayor Irwin and Town Council members for allowing me a few minutes to speak about the Friends of the Library. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and our mission is dedicated to serving the library in a number of ways, as you can see on the slide right there. This is our new board, just elected this July, and our terms run until June the 30th of next year. You all can go ahead and have a seat. As you can see on the slide, we have raised funds to support library programs. And one of the ways that we have done that, if you'll take a look at the bar graph, these are the sales that come from our little bookstore within the library on a monthly basis. It's a pretty good fundraiser for us. And some of you may not know that there is a wonderful bookstore. If you enter the library, hang a right, it's in that first room there. And the books, there are some really wonderful bargains in there. We use these funds that we earn from cash donations, from dues, from book sales, and other ways that we obtain funds. We use them to help support library programs and literacy programs. One of the next slide, please. We saw, we had a children's literacy. One of them was Read Better, Be Better. This is an after-school program for children. We have young readers, second, third, and fourth grade. We pair them up with a teenager who's a junior high or a high school student. They get together twice a week for 45 minutes to an hour for eight weeks, and these kids just blossom. It's amazing to see how their reading comprehension and their actual reading improves. We, as Friends of the Library, supply every snack. I think that's their favorite thing that they have. And at the end of the program, we also pay for a pizza party and each kid gets a special award. We give them gift cards to various things. One thing of note, we are, the Pine Top Lakeside Public Library is the top rural Read Better, Be Better program in the entire state. I think that's awesome.
Easy.
Another literacy program that we've been involved with is the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. What we do is we've supplied all the funds for the T-shirts for the little ones and books for each hundred books read. So, in order for them to even get their T-shirt, they have to have read or mom and dad read a hundred books to them. Believe it or not, three kids have already completed 1,000 books. We are also, as Friends of the Library, we're involved in activities that not only the library does, but the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. You can see our entry from last fall. This was our Fall Festival Parade. We get to do that again this year. And you can see on there, we also have other things that we're involved in. I think a big one on an ongoing basis is our Little Library Box. We have one directly across from the library that we fill up with books that come from donations and also the Catholic Charities one. And of course, we are involved in the Easter egg program this year, the Family Easter Program. One of our inaugural things that we did last year, first time ever for us, was Santa's Workshop. So, we had Santa Claus there. Each kid got to visit with Santa Claus. Each kid got a wrapped Christmas age-appropriate book. We are planning to do that again this year. This, we figured with 150 kids last year, we're going to expect a lot more kids, probably around 300. So, we've gotten the permission to utilize the White Mountain Nature Center. It will be at the White Mountain Nature Center December 3rd. So, if you want to come and see what's going on, it's going to start at 2:00 on that date. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate all your work. Will you remind us of that December 3rd deadline date as it comes a little closer, please?
[inaudible]
Okay, thank you for your volunteer work, and I know Betsy's a big integral part of all of that too. So, we appreciate your presentation tonight and thanks for being here. Any questions or comments? Okay. Item D3 is a presentation by Arizona Water of the Joint Integrated Demand Management Program. I'll invite Lee Hetrick up and you can introduce your team there, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Irwin, and thank you, council members, for having us here. So, Mayor Irwin and Keith and Tony are aware of this program. It's the Joint Integrated Demand Management Program. If any of you guys have ever had conversations with me, we've probably discussed the water supply up here, the Pine Top Aquifer, the Coconino Aquifer. So, this program's about conservation and we have a nice presentation that I want to introduce, Ruluka and Alex, and they will introduce this program to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you. Okay, so my name is Ruluka Mielczesko. I'm the Water Conservation Coordinator for Arizona Water Company. This is Alex Fabb. She's our Conservation Specialist dedicated to our Northern Group. I'm going to kick it off by going over just from a high level Arizona Water Company's strategy and kind of how we got to this point, and then I'll let Alex get into the details of the work that we've done so far. I want to premise this by saying that this is a 10-minute presentation covering a lot of information. So, at any point, if you want us to come back and talk more in depth a little bit about this, we're more than happy to. I always like to start off these presentations by explaining Arizona Water Company's water resource strategy, so kind of our thought process behind even getting to this point. So, our strategy has two prongs. The first is to make sure that as a company, we obtain and maintain a diverse water supply for all of our systems. That's mainly what my boss does and our water resource analysts. And then the second prong is promoting the efficient use of those water supplies. That's my job as well as our specialists. We have one other specialist. So, our strategy for conservation, as a private utility, we're the second largest utility in the state, but we're a little bit different than other private utilities. As you can see on the map, we have many different systems spread out all across the state. We split our systems by three groups, the Northern Group, the West, and the East. And when it came to conservation, most private utilities have a blanket program that is one-size-fits-all. But, when leadership was thinking about conservation from a company perspective, given how diverse our communities are, they didn't think that that was the right way to go if we actually wanted water savings. We have certain communities like Gold Canyon or Saddle Brook Ranch, and their water needs and conservation needs are very different than like a Bisbee or an Aho. So, we kind of went a more customized approach, and that's where this term of Integrated Demand Management came in. It's a big clunky word that just means like really cohesive conservation. So, it's called Demand Management because we really want to communicate to our customers that water conservation, yes, is the right thing to do. However, every gallon of water that you save is a gallon that we're leaving in the aquifer for the benefit of the sustainability of the community, and it relieves pressure off of the infrastructure. So, it's good for the company as well. Additionally, we call it integrated because as a private water utility, I work at the corporate office in Phoenix. So, sometimes I'm a little out of touch of the communities and what's going on in the culture. So, we call them integrated because we really focus on listening to the community and having them tell us what they think would work best for conservation. So, really our best ideas come from our communities and it's because it's an integrated program. It's a joint program. So, these are the logos of the programs that we've launched to date. I don't want to dive into those right now, but I just wanted to mention that these are, more information is available on these programs if you go online. These are just the nine that we've launched so far. So, whenever we go to launch a program, we're always looking at first what's already being done in a community to conserve water. We realize that it's not super new to have communities conserve water. So, we're looking at what the towns and cities are doing. That's usually in land use plans or codes, looking at what other private utilities or other utilities in the areas are doing. What's the county doing for conservation? In the instance of Pine Top Lakeside, what are local organizations doing? Like the American Groundwater Trust has already done a lot with youth education. So, getting an idea of what's the lay of the land and what's already being done. We also then look at what Arizona Water Company's been doing. In this instance, Lee and Billy, their team has been doing a lot for conservation already. We have a number of tariffs that promote conservation across all of our systems. One of the big ones that I want to point out is that Lee and his team have been doing a great job in trying to get out into the community. These are some photos of the last Balloon Festival. I think it was in 2023. They had this really cool meter setup, teaching people how to read meters and how to fix a leak to engage with the community. And every single demand management program that we launch has a set of standard elements. I'm not going to go into every single one, but I do want to mention, because sometimes it's kind of hard to wrap your mind around what this program even is, kind of the gist of it is a public engagement element. So, utilizing social media to really get the word out to people that they have a hub where they can go if they want to learn about what are the general water resources for the area and where they can get information for conservation. So, in the White Mountains area, we wanted to make sure that a wide net in this community had one area to go to where they could see where all these different community partners, what they were doing for conservation, and really get empowered with information on what they can do at home for conservation. We also, through the public engagement program, put out videos. So, one of the big ones I like to point out is a water journey video that we'll do in the next few months after we launch the program, just explaining to people where their water comes from, depending on who their utility is. In addition to the standardized elements of a program, we have an individualized element, and that's where we really go to the community and say, okay, this program includes all these different things that are pretty standard, but what do you think would really work for the community? In the White Mountains program, which Alex will go into, one thing I want to emphasize is getting the youths engaged. We're excited to start working with fourth graders and making sure that they're aware of conservation and water resources and really instill that mindset of conservation from a young age. And with that, I'm going to pass it along to Alex and she'll go over the Leave It Better program.
Thank you, Ruluka. So, I'm Alex Fabb. I'm the Northern Group Water Conservation Specialist for Arizona Water Company. Our program for the White Mountains region that we'll be launching in September is called Leave It Better. You can see our really pretty logo there. And then, oh, that's the wrong direction. So, this is just a visual of the process that we follow when we create these programs. So, I'm not going to go into that, but the first step for the Leave It Better program was to meet with our stakeholders within an initial pitch meeting, and that happened on January 19th of this year. And at that meeting, we established the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, the City of Cholo, Navajo County, Arizona Water Company as official stakeholders. And then later on, at a future meeting in April of this year, we established American Groundwater Trust as an additional official stakeholder. We also have Blossom Digital Marketing listed on there as just a shout out. They're kind of an unofficial stakeholder. They do all of our digital marketing, so they did our logo for the program, and they do logos and landing pages for all of our IDMPs and manage our Facebook. But, their digital marketing strategist, Kayla True, actually lives in Vernon and is very involved in all of the communities here in the White Mountains. And so, she's been super helpful sharing her contacts and keeping us looped into events, and she works events with us, so we just wanted to give them a shout out. So, we also conducted a comprehensive water use assessment in our AWC service areas. So, that's in Pine Top Lakeside and in Over Guard. And what that is, is that we look at water use data from 2018 to 2023, and we just try to establish whether historical use justifies the need for conservation efforts, and then if so, where we can focus those efforts to make the most impact. So, we, part of that is looking at seasonal water usage. So, we look at the warmest three months in the summer and the coldest three months of the winter and make a comparison of that water use data. And for our CWA that we did for these service areas, we found that there's about double the water use in the summer, and that makes sense. You guys have a lot of people visiting this summer. There's a big trade and tourism industry here, and so that just spikes. And so, we thought that we could focus really heavily on summer outdoor water use in our messaging. And so, we share these results with the stakeholders and we talk about it with them, get their feedback, and see how they want to proceed and what they want to do to tailor the program based on those results. And so, this program is going to cover the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, City of Cholo, Over Guard, and then Forest Town, which is one of our service areas. It's very small. You can see it on the map there. We've got it highlighted. The blue areas are just Arizona Water Company service areas. We don't service water to City of Cholo, but they're also included because they wanted to partner with us since they're within the region. And so, we had a soft launch for the program at the Balloon Festival on June 22nd, and it went really well. We had a booth with some giveaways. We did trivia. We gave away some student activity books for Discovering Water in Arizona, and the American Groundwater Trust was there with us and had a groundwater flow model, and we connected with some people in the community, and it went really well. So, it was exciting to get out there and just start meeting people and telling people about the program that's coming. So, in the future, we'll be launching officially on September 28th. So, that will be when we launch our landing page and our Facebook page, and we're going to be promoting that at the Run to the Pines event. So, we'll have a booth there. We'll have some giveaways with our logo on them. We'll have information about the program and hopefully some activities as well. We're also working with Arizona Project Wet right now to plan for a fourth-grade water festival in the 2024-2025 school year. We're really excited to bring that programming to the White Mountains. Arizona Project Wet has been doing a White Mountains Apache Tribe Festival, but other than that, they haven't had a water festival up here, and they do them throughout the state. So, it's exciting that these students are going to be part of that going forward. We want that to be an annual event. We have a Rotary Club presentation scheduled in September. We met with a member of the Rotary Club at the Balloon Festival and got that set up. So, we're excited to meet some more people and partners in the community and network through that. And then one of the things that we want to focus on with this program is messaging for vacation rentals and visitors because that's a big part of the water usage, as we mentioned. So, we want to just create some things that people can maybe put up in vacation rentals to encourage water conservation for people who are renting and staying or visiting, and just get eyes on the concepts, the program, make sure there's QR codes to our landing page and Facebook page so that people have more information. And then we're really looking forward to just working with all of our different stakeholders moving forward. That's the biggest part of this IDMP approach is just to collaborate, and we're really grateful that the Town of Pine Top Lakeside has agreed to be a collaborator because like Ruluka said, you guys know the community, you know what the needs are, and you can help us hone in on that so that all of our messaging and all of our efforts, our workshops are tailored to what people are actually interested in learning about and resources that they really need so that they'll take advantage of them. And we know a lot of people also aren't necessarily online, so we try to be present at those community events, and partnering with you guys helps us stay in the loop as to when those events are happening, being present there so that we can share those resources in person as well. So, that's what we have for you guys today, and like Ruluka said, if you want us to go in depth, we can come back in the future and dive into different elements of that. But, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions or comments from the council? I appreciate what you're doing. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I do have a question. I mean, you've been putting in new lines, I know, on several of the roadways here. I just, my question to you, has there ever been any thought to putting in larger water lines for better fire suppression?
Ooh, we will defer to Lee Hetrick on that one.
I thought that would come down to Lee.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a separate subject from their presentation. But, yes, we do have, we're regulated by Corporation Commission and Department of Environmental Quality. There's rules for main extensions and whatnot like that. I think we could come in here some other time or meet with you guys and go over how that works, but it's regulated, and mains are extended through main extension agreements. You know, there's a process of approvals, you know, that you need for a main extension. Number one, the Corporation Commission has to approve it. Number two, ADEQ, and possibly the Water Resources, Department of Water Resources. But, yeah, I'd be happy to meet with you guys and talk more about that, and I'd welcome that if you'd like to do it.
Okay, thank you.
We'd like to invite you back to do that sometime later, I think.
No problem.
So, any other questions for Ruluka or Alex? I appreciate your efforts. We do live in a desert state, whether we want to admit it or not, up here in the mountains, but it's something that we all need to be concerned with. So, thank you very much for your work, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Item D4, which is a presentation of Navajo County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan in consideration of Resolution Number 24-1721, adopting the Navajo County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Katrina and Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I just would like to say a few things before Katrina starts. As everybody knows Katrina around here. She's the Navajo County Emergency Manager. However, I think it's important to highlight her success on this. This was not an easy task to complete. Typically, in the years past, we've taken the Navajo County Emergency Management Plan, Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we just updated it. However, FEMA threw in some loopholes and some jumps and some, definitely some interesting things this year. And Katrina has championed that for all of the communities in Navajo County, and I really want to tell her thank you because it's been amazing to work with her, and without her, it wouldn't have happened. And so, I know it's been, it's been a challenge, but we appreciate all your hard work, and I sure do. I couldn't have done it without her. So, have at it. Good luck.
Well, I'll promise to keep it brief, but in true form, partnership is the key word with this plan. It is multi-jurisdictional, meaning all of our municipalities have to adopt this plan if they want to participate. adopt this plan if they want to participate, um, as in addition to the county. So without Matt, I wouldn't have been able to get anywhere for your plan. So I, I do appreciate his partnership and his support and cheering me on to get this done. So, um, this plan is, as Matt said, FEMA, um, a mitigation plan for our entire county. It goes towards mitigating the threats and hazards that we've identified. You know, we have a lot. It's not just about wildfire, even though that's when you guys usually see me up here. Um, we have flooding, we have hazmat, we have high winds, winter storms, et cetera. So this plan is to identify those threats. The, the changes that FEMA threw in were some things, more additional language about climate and what climate can, um, changes do to those threats, um, the impacts to our count, our communities, and I think that was about the bit, the two biggest changes. Um, as I said, all of our communities have to adopt and, and approve this plan. So with that, I'll shut up. If you have questions, there's, this is a five-year process. Every five years, we got to come back to you for this approval. Um, the next step is, once I get all of the adoptions from all of our communities, we send that up to FEMA. They are in the process of reviewing the plan, and as long as we don't have any major changes, we get that la, last letter from FEMA, and we're good to go for another five years.
Okay, thank you. Um, it was a very extensive plan, a lot of reading materials.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Craigbaum?
I would just say as a comment, it's very impressive. Um, so, um, it's tailed and wide encompassing, encompassing. So, um, it's very impressive. I was, oh, really bowled over by it.
Oh, thank you.
It's, it's a great plan because it does incorporate, it is all encompassing, so that if there's a mitigation project we want to apply for federal funding for, we, we wanted to make sure that that avenue was there for that specific purpose, but also to help educate our citizens on mitigation, so.
So one thing I noticed, um, of course, I focused in on the topics that were key to Pinetop Lakeside, and a lot of things are really outside of our, really outside of our control. You know, we can't control the wind or the snow, those. But the one thing I did note was the woodland lake dam is something that it was identified as a hazard, and I know that there's been conversations with the irrigation district about getting that taken care of. Are you prepared to address any mitigation on that topic? We're not necessarily right tonight.
Not, not tonight, but it is definitely one of those projects. Like, we have several dams, levees, and wooden, or not wooden, earthen type dams that are all a concern. Um, as you may remember, 2021, we had the Millet Swale fail. Um, we have levee protections in Winslow with Holbrook. So levees and dams are a high priority, excuse me, throughout the county, but I don't have specific on woodland tonight.
Okay, because that is something that we have a little bit more control over, I think.
Yes. We, and you know, make, making sure that we maintain it and mitigate that threat is definitely a key priority. So we'll be working towards those efforts in the next five years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just one.
Yes.
I just, just found it. I was, I remember reading through this that, uh, we were, uh, highly exposed to wildfire, um, and, uh, the, as was Cholo, but I'm wondering if having this rating, um, lets us apply for any like federal grants for mitigation or any of that kind of stuff. Does this, does this tie into something else?
Yes, it absolutely does. And as a matter of fact, to your question, um, Chief Morgan has a mitigation grant pending approval from FEMA of this plan. Um, once we get that done, he has a mitigation grant to do some more fuel sending, which you're familiar with because we do that quite a lot, but it is actually under that FEMA mitigation grant, um, process. So yes, to your question.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else then that entertained a motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1721, adopting the 2024 Navajo County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion of second. It's a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for being here tonight, Katrina. We always appreciate seeing you.
Thank you.
And you can come more than once or twice a year if you'd like.
I'll try and work on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, item D5 on our agenda tonight is consideration of Resolution Number 24-1722, entering into an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Northeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy, NALIDA, and the town of Pinetop Lakeside, acting by and through the Pinetop Lakeside Police Department. Chief Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Uh, this agreement is between the police department and the Navajo County Community College District. Basically, what it's for is for the academy to provide services to law enforcement agencies in the county. Um, what they will do is basically, uh, provide staff to, uh, manage and run the academy, uh, up to the standards for the Arizona Post, Arizona Peace Officers Standards and Training Board. And then agencies within the county would provide staff to basically train, uh, new recruits that come into, into the academy who are sponsored by a law enforcement agency within the, within the state of Arizona. So we currently have had five of our officers right now go through this academy. So it's, we use it, so it's important to us, and the proximity of it's important to us. So we'd like to keep it and continue using it and send our staff there to help out. Um, our agreement is that we provide staff to do that as far as we sit, we do send staff intermittently to do individual training classes. We also send staff over to do, uh, recruit training roles and supervisory roles. If we send somebody over for the recruit training or supervisory, we usually assign them to the academy and they're, they're there for the duration of the academy. Um, so costs associated with that, um, would be some overtime costs for regular just intermittent training, and, uh, some for the, if we assign them there full-time, again, they have some overtime above their, their normal salary. So that would be the cost being incurred by the town. Um, so if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? I can see this is a real benefit to all of us, and I believe I saw Officer Bonilla in the paper the other day as one of our training officers.
He was. Mm-hmm.
For the class that was graduating, so.
He did a fantastic job, and we got a, a letter, uh, academy director. He did a phenomenal job while he was there for his first time going and participating in it, so we're proud of him.
For him, our congratulations on that, please. Yes. Any questions, comments, or a motion? Counselor Craigbaum?
I noticed that it was in the newspaper, so I think that's excellent.
Yes.
Good-looking group.
Yep, sure.
Yes, motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1722, authorize the chief of police to enter into an intergovernmental agreement pursuant to ARS 11-952 between the Navajo County Community College District and the town of Pinetop Lakeside Police Department to provide northeastern Arizona with a police academy, north, northeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy, and authorize the chief of police, Dan Barnes, to execute all documents necessary to complete this agreement.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion of second. It's a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for that one, Chief. Um, item D6 is consideration and resolution of, excuse me, consideration of Resolution Number 24-1723, entering into an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, the cities of Winslow and Cholo, and the town of Pinetop Lakeside regarding, regarding the burn grant funding for fiscal year 25-26.
Vice Mayor and Council, uh, each year we renew this with the Navajo County Sheriff's Office. Uh, the sheriff's office actually operates a specialized team. It's called the Major Crimes Apprehension Team, or MCAT, and this team, uh, focuses on investigations in the county for drugs, gangs, violent crimes, and a wide variety of other things in the county. And they apply each year for burn, federal burn grant monies to have officer or detectives from multiple agencies join this team and, and, uh, operate within it. Currently, we don't have anybody operating within the team. It is built into this year's, this year's budget to have somebody, um, assigned to the team. Uh, until we get to a point where we can free up a person to go in there, we won't have anybody in there. But, um, uh, on the financial analysis for this, the grant would allot roughly 75% or $88,800 toward the salary and ERE for a detective assigned to the, uh, MCAT, uh, team. Each municipality is, uh, responsible for the supervision, training, salary, benefits, and all their responsibilities and duties relating to their employment. Uh, reimbursement for, uh, each municipality would be provided core via, uh, invoice for salary and benefits per detective with backup documentation. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
First of all, I misspoke. It's for this current fiscal year 24-25.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm sorry about that. Yes, Counselor Phillips?
Wouldn't you say there'll be a detective assigned? Does it have to be a detective, or could, could a patrol person be assigned to that position?
Yes, a patrol person would be assigned. If we, if we do assign somebody to it, let's say it's an officer, we'd actually assign them as a, as a detective. So they actually go in with a bump in pay, actually.
So then their normal job would be to go to this task force five days a week or whatever, and are they still going to be required to work patrol, or is that, would that just convert into overtime?
Uh, permanently assigned to this while they're, while they're on the team.
Do you allow those officers to come back and work overtime though, in patrol, if they're available?
As long as it doesn't conflict with other duties they got going on, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So i- is there any kind of a time issue or timing with this grant and things? I mean, let's say in three months, you have an, or six months, you have an officer available to, to join this task force? I mean, are the monies available then?
Yeah, for, for fiscal year 24-25, they're available.
Okay, so this is available for this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
One more question, Chief.
Yes.
Do you, uh, do you guys currently have anyone in the academy? So you're going to be adding staff, or?
Uh, we don't have anybody in the academy currently. We're actually fully staffed right now.
Full staff, okay.
Anything else? Motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1723, entering into an intergovernmental agreement between the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, the cities of Winslow and Cholo, and the town of Pinetop Lakeside regarding the burn grant funding for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, and authorize chief of police, Dan Barnes, to complete all documents necessary to execute this agreement.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion of second. It's a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Um, item D7 is Consider Resolution Number 24-1724 pertaining to grant award for projects submitted under FFY 2024, Arizona Department of Homeland Security, State Department Homeland Security Grant Program, partial funding through grants, subrecipient agreement, reallocation
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, uh, earlier in the year, we applied for a 2024 Homeland Security Grant for the purchase of a new gas mask. Our, our old gas masks are, are getting pretty old, so we wanted to get those, um, rotated out. And the initial cost for the, for the, for that grant was $15,280. Um, during the, the last RAC meeting, they approved funding the entire project, um, but a portion of that was going to come out of 2022 reallocation funds totaling $3,319. So that's what I'm, that's what we're here today to talk about is the 22 funds. Um, so again, $3,319, um, has been awarded to us, uh, in the form of a reimbursable grant. So basically, we pay for the, the equipment upfront, and then we'd submit reimbursement through Homeland Security to get that money back, so. And the, we haven't got the, the agreement yet for the rest of the project, but that's coming here shortly for the remaining portion so we can buy all the equipment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Motion? Counselor Phillips?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1724, accepting the 2022 State of Arizona Department of Homeland Security Grant Agreement 22-AZDOHS-HSGP 220104-02, and authorize chief of police, Dan Barnes, as agent and/or his designee for the town of Pinetop Lakeside to administer the grant during the period of performance, June 1st, 2024 through May 31st of 2025.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconds. It's a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all your efforts on this. Item D8 is consideration of Resolution Number 24-1726, entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for financial system assistance for the design of the East Woodland Lake Road, South Woodland Lane, State Route 260 project. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, this project goes back to when me and Keith went to Forest Lane to meet with the residents of Forest Lane. Um, we've always known that we've had a, a problem right there at Chevron. We've tried really hard over the years to get it to meet the warrants for a light at that intersection. However, we've been very, we have been unsuccessful, um, falling short on our numbers at that intersection. However, the next thing down from putting a light there would be to widen the, the intersection so that there's a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn out of Woodland Lake Road. Um, we believe, and what we've studied and figured out is that that would be the best approach for us to reduce the congestion at that intersection. We hope that'll help resolve Forest Lane and Timbers, uh, traffic that, volumes that are increased down there because, as we all know, if you come up there on a busy weekend and you can see the traffic piling up at Woodland Lake Road at the intersection, it's easy to turn off and go to another intersection to, to get out on 260. Um, over the years, we just haven't had the funding to design this. As you guys see from this, it's almost $179,000 to design this. What it does is the three, the three lane at Chevron, and then it's curb and gutter and sidewalk and bike lane all the way to the park. Um, the reason we chose to do that is we also know that we have pedestrian issues in that area, and we would like to be able to get the pedestrians all the way down to Woodland Park and tie them into the park. So we were fortunate enough to apply for the SMART grant for this, and they accepted it, and we have already met the grant criteria. So all we had to do was apply for a build grant. We did that this last year. Um, we were unsuccessful, but we've met the need of the grant. So at this point, we do not owe Arizona State anything in return. We've met those needs. So if we accept this tonight, it'll basically give us a set of plans on the shelf that we can work forward. Furthermore, we've set aside our NACOG money for 2028, 27-28, uh, $500,000 to go towards this project. So we'll have the designs done, and then in 27-28, we'll do some construction. If we can get, uh, more grants, we'll try to complete the whole project, but we'll focus on the intersection itself. So that's why I've got lined out for this grant. I know it's a lot, but, um, we're trying to get there however we can get there, so.
Thanks, Matt. Are there any questions? Counselor Smith?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Long time coming on that one. We've been, we've been trying to get that corner improved for so long, as long as I've been on council, eight years, you know. So it's, uh, it's, it's good to see some positive things happening. Good job.
Thank you, Jerry.
So I have one concern, um, and it talks about the final project amount may exceed the initial estimate identified above, and we'd be on the hook for that. What is the likelihood of that? The design cost going over?
Um, I think we can cut back.
We can make sure that we don't go over that?
Yeah. It, it's typical ADOT grants, just like the bridge. If we go over, it's on us to cover that. Uh, we have $179,000 in there. Why it's so expensive is it meets all the federal guidelines. We have $179,000 in there, why it's so expensive is it meets all the federal guidelines, so we have to do the NEPA process and all that so that we can actually apply for federal grants, which is good for us. So, once this design's completed, it opens up a whole new realm of grants that we can apply for, which is going to be a lot higher in cost than our norm, our normal projects, if that makes sense.
It does, and we had that conversation with the grant administrator from ADOT when they were up here.
Yeah.
Week or so ago.
When you jump from just a local grant or a local contractor to federal, it's, I don't even know what the percentage is at this point, it's probably four times what a normal project is, but we gotta compete at some point for some of these grants, so it'll give us an opportunity. The reason we don't typically apply for federal is this right here, we could never afford $179,000 to design this. Typically, this would cost maybe $40,000 or $50,000 to design, but then we have to try to come up with our own local funds and smaller grants to make it work, and we just haven't been able to be successful with that.
Thank you, anything else for Matt?
Make that motion?
Counselor Smith, I thought you might like to. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Quick, so this is just, the, the grant money is just for to get the blueprints and design, and then we'll put them on the shelf till later when we have the money.
Yes, sir.
Got it, got it, thank you.
Counselor Smith?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1726, entering into an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for financial assistance for the design of the East Woodland Lake Road, State Road 260 to South Woodland Lane project, and authorize Mayor Irwin to execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second is our further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Matt, appreciate your work on that one.
Good, ma'am.
Item D9 is consideration of Resolution Number 24-1727, entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for financial assistance for the design of the Pinetop Commons Road and Bridge, Billy Creek Bridge Project. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Same thing, we were able to, when I was meeting with the first project with ADOT, they made it clear to me that there was still available funding, and if I wanted to come back and apply for a second one, they would, they'd be happy to look at our second opportunity. At that time, when I was working on the Woodland Lake Road, we were working on how to make the commons project, Pinetop Commons project happen. However, we all know that we still need an access into our 50 acres, and we still need access into this land. So we went forward with this grant, this will design the road from 260 back to the bridge, the bridge is not included in this, but it's the embutment up to the bridge. The bridge that we had planned for this is, they're getting more into the, build, build the bridge elsewhere and bring it in and set it, so that's kind of what we'll do, and those companies now are providing the plans for the bridge, so that's what we intend to use for this project, if that makes sense. And that's kind of a trend across the United States, is they're switching to the more prefab bridges and stuff, trying to pour and place bridges because they're just significantly cheaper.
Any questions or comments for Matt? I think this could open up a lot of opportunities, Counselor Snitzer?
Just a question, is there any, with the, you know, the new, new proposed fire station across the road, is, and I know they're driving a road back there, is there any potential to also tie that road back into our property?
Yes, we are currently working, and actually, I think we already had passed that, didn't we? I think that was a couple, a month or two ago. That was the easement that you guys passed a few months ago.
Okay.
So the fire department has given us easement all the way connecting to.
Yeah, I knew, I knew about that, but I just, I didn't know whether we had any specific plans to tie it into the 50 acres.
We do, we're working with Chief Morgan on a grant, and I think it's actually made it to the next round, through the legislative, is that correct, Keith?
Ingressively directed spending.
And we're looking at $2 million roughly to build that road through. It will be a low water crossing, it won't be a bridge.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
We have a bridge on either side of it, so we thought that that would be more fitting, so we didn't have a $4 million project instead of a $2 million project.
Right, cool.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the same question, and we can get this done within the, the financial.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions or a motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1727, entering into an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for financial assistance for the design of the Pinetop Commons Road and Bridge project, and authorize Mayor Irwin to execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction.
I second that.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second is our further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thanks for all your work on that one too, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Item D10 is consideration of Resolution Number 24-1728, entering into an intergovernmental agreement with Navajo County for financial assistance to complete the Porter Mountain Road School Area Assessment and Construction Plans for Porter Mountain Improvements. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. As you're aware, the Porter Mountain project is underway, and we knew that we did not have enough funding to complete that project. However, we've been working with the school over the years, and we were anticipating to use Safe Routes to School money. You might or might not know how this Safe Route to School money works, but what it is, it's a tax that gets attached to the district, to the people inside the district, or property owners inside the district. However, by our efforts to go through and find grants and find money to pay for that, it reduced what the citizens would actually have to pay. So at this point, the shortfall on that project is 610,000. However, how that tax works and when it would come in, would not come in until after the completion of the project. So we, I reached out to the county, me and Keith did, and asked them to float that 610,000 until the actual tax came back into the county, and then we'll reimburse them once that tax comes back in. This was all kind of shuffle of a hand to make this project work, or we would have had to postpone the project and even further the, the delay of the project and potentially the loss of the millions of dollars that we got, the 2.2, I think, million dollars that we got for, from the legislative, from. David Cook?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, a lot to remember. So anyways, that's how we got to this point. The county was agreeable, and so that's why this IP is in front of you tonight.
Another example of good partnership with the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments for Matt on this one? I'd entertain a motion then. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1728, entering into an intergovernmental agreement with Navajo County for financial assistance to complete the Porter Mountain Road School Area Assessment and Construction Plans for Porter Mountain Road Improvements Project, and authorize Mayor Irwin to execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second is our further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate all your work on that. Item D11 is Consider Resolution Number 24-1725, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision participation and release form to participate in the opioid settlement agreement with Kroger Company. Kevin?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. What we have for your consideration tonight is Resolution 24-1725, to enter into another settlement agreement for opioid abuse claims. If you remember, in March of '23, council approved entering into a settlement agreement with several different companies, it was TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart, and you all did approve that, and we did enter into that agreement. There has been another settlement agreement, a national settlement agreement with Kroger Co., and we are eligible to enter into that agreement if you all pass the resolution and the release form. The release form says that we would, we would release any claims we have, we don't have any claims, but it's just part of the, the agreement. They have ordered Kroger Co. to pay over a billion dollars, and 1.2 billion will be used by participating states and subdivisions to remediate and abate the impacts of the opioid crisis. At this time, it's not known what potential settlement we will get because they don't know how many cities or towns are going to enter into it and how many states are, but Arizona has entered into that. So if you all approve this tonight, we can throw our hat in the ring for any potential settlements.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Kevin? I think the previous settlements have been pretty small, if I remember correctly.
And this one probably would be too, but.
That's okay, every little bit helps. Anything else, anybody wants to add to that? And entertain a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 24-1725, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision participation and release form to participate in the opioid settlement agreement with Kroger Company.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second is our further discussion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Kevin. Item D12 is a public hearing, discussion and consideration of Resolution Number 24-1729, adopting the FY 2024-25 final budget for the town of Pinetop Lakeside. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. On June 27th, council approved and adopted the tentative budget for the town for FY 2425. What we have for you tonight, for your consideration, is the adoption of the final budget for 2425. There are no changes from what was approved on June 27th. The, the total budget for FY 2425 will be $46,681,272. But as we discussed in, in the meeting in June, we don't anticipate we're going to spend $46 million. There's a lot of things in there, $12 million for the possible purchase of the rest of the park, and there's a whole lot of grant money in there that if it comes, we will spend it, but we don't anticipate spending all the 46 million.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, are there any questions? This is a public hearing, did any member of the public want to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1729, adopting the final budget for the town of Pinetop Lakeside for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second is our further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Kevin, and all the department heads that worked on that. There being no further business tonight, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.